Join me in the invocation. Heavenly fathers, we assemble together, we pause to recognize your presence among us. May we as commissioners attempt to do what is pleasing in your sight and in the best interest of our citizenry. Grant us wisdom, patience, and humility as we deal with the issues before us. We are grateful for the many blessings we enjoy as a community and for the freedoms we share as a nation. We pause to recognize all those who serve for our safety and protection. Shelter each of them with your love and grace. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some employee recognition tonight. This is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. And the Union County Emergency Communications Division is celebrating the second full week of April, April 9 through 15, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is sponsored by the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials International, and is celebrated annually. It honors thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens of the United States. So I will take this opportunity to read the proclamation. It says that whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Union County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Union County Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through the 15th, 2017, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Union County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Motion to adopt. All those in favor say aye. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, Vicki Calacut, with our communications division director, is here to accept the leave.
Next. Let's come around here.
Gentlemen, so have a push.
Make sure everybody sees. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Give my hand. Next item is a public hearing, conditional rezoning CZ 2017-011.
Mr. Matthews, hopefully you have a presentation.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board Member, Manager. What you have here tonight is a conditional rezoning request. This is conditional rezoning number 2017-011. It is a request to rezone a piece of property from R-40 to B-2 conditional zoning. Not sure why that's not shown on your screen, but I will just go from there. This property is actually located on Highway 16, just north of Newtown Road. This is a very small parcel, it's about .215 acres. Technically, the property does not actually meet the zoning classification. This is sort of a grandfather piece of property. Zoning classification would have required it to be 40,000 square feet. It's not even a third of an acre, it's about two tenths of an acre. So it's a grandfather piece of property. There is a home on the property that has been used in the past for residential purposes. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to CZ-B2 and utilize the existing structure for office purposes as a commercial use. So what you have here tonight, and I wish I could go through the presentation for you, is that a very small piece of property, it is within our area defined in our comprehensive plan as being in a neighborhood center. The neighborhood center does define that commercial uses are appropriate within that circular area defined as a neighborhood center. It is about a quarter of a mile from the intersection of Newtown and Highway 16. Again, as I said before, it has an existing structure on the property. It is about 600 square feet. Tax records show it approximately 600 square feet. The planning board met and discussed this item. Their recommendations were in favor, it was a, I believe it was a five to oh vote, yes, on that particular one. They had some suggestive conditions. Those suggested conditions were, one, that only office uses would be allowed on the property; number two, that the use is limited to the building and its existing footprint. In other words, can't tear the building down and rebuild another structure. They have to use the building as it is, obviously renovate it to use it for commercial purposes; and then number three, a maximum of five parking spaces would be allowed. And this would obviously limit the size of any business that could go in there, because five spaces is the maximum you could have. The planning board reviewed this as an opportunity to reuse a piece of property. We don't believe that residential is the highest and best use of that parcel there on Highway 16. They were concerned with the impact of the adjacent property and the neighborhood that's adjacent to that. So they felt that by limiting the building as it is, being used as it is, limited it to only office uses, and to having only five spaces, that that would protect the neighborhood and any of the other uses that were around on the property. Also, it would somewhat bring this property into, it wouldn't be in full conformance, but it would be close, because in our B-2 zoning classification, we do not have a minimum lot size. And while the setbacks may not necessarily meet that, because it is a pre-existing building, it would be grandfathered under that. So right now, you have a non-conforming use that doesn't meet its zoning classification. If it were to be rezoned, it would be closer to meeting the zoning classification. Setbacks may still be an issue, but it's a pre-existing building. I think members of the neighborhood are here, they may have some comments. I do not see the applicant here, I did not see her here, so I'm not sure if she has some comments, but again, she was here for the planning board meeting, she didn't meet with the planning board and discuss some of these items. She did agree to the conditions that the planning board recommended, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
The two tenths acre you're talking, is that taken into consideration size and widening of 16?
That is as it is today. So the reality is, is depending on where the widening goes, and that's what we do not know. We do not know which side of the road, will it go mostly on one side, will it be symmetrical, will it be on both sides? Depending on that, that will have an impact on that piece of property. So it could very well be that if the state decides to do widening and a significant amount is on that side, it may actually be a taking, and they may lose the entire piece of property. But we don't know that information right now.
When you say offices, is there a type of services that may be provided there?
So they, again, any of the thing that we consider an office category, so it could be a contractor's office, but they can't park machinery out there. It could be an accountant, it could be a lawyer. It's specific to office only. And again, with five spaces, the planning board felt that that pretty much restricted the amount of employees and the use that you would have here. But it's any use that would fall under that office category. Now, could that be a dentist office? Certainly it could, but can you fit that in 600 square feet? We can't answer that question, but that could certainly be a use if they could make that fit within that.
Does this particular property abut to the other property that's being asked to rezone?
It does, yes sir. So this property actually is, the fire station, it is adjacent to the fire station and in between where the Truffle Plaza property is located. So it is right in line with that, yes sir.
So they all abut one another?
They did, yes sir.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you. One concern, what, if we, if we do anything with this rezoning, what happens if they do take that whole piece of property? What's the likelihood of them having to take the whole piece of property? Because if they do, wouldn't that increase the value of the property that the state would have to pay, a higher value?
That's a good question. I don't know the formula state uses for determining what they pay property owners, but obviously, if a piece of property is used and zoned for commercials purposes, likely that value is higher. Again, our own tax office usually values things based on its highest and best use and not necessarily what the actual use is. I'm not sure what the value is on this piece of property at this point in time, but it is very possible that if it's rezoned, it could increase the value of the property.
And I guess then, would that count toward the state having to buy?
That would obviously be an expense that they would have to pay if they were acquiring the entire piece of property. Yes sir.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, and we have a couple of folks that want to speak. First to speak is Robert Consoli.
Good evening, commissioners, ladies. My name's Robert Consoli, I'm the president of the HOA of Chatsworth, where the property that's right next to this property in question. Rather than go through everything we've gone through with you folks before with regard to Truffle Plaza and all the reasons that the Truffle Plaza should be rezoned, I mean, I guess I understand that there's no minimum to be changed from residential to commercial, but this is almost laughable. I mean, this thing, this thing is like a shed that you have in your backyard to have your lawn mower. That's how big this thing is. Now, I was at the meeting, the March 6 meeting where this was approved five to zero, and I think the day before, you folks had your meeting where I believe you agreed that, about the sidewalk widening and the bicycle lanes. So my understanding is that all this is going to be commensurate with Weddington, which means it's going to be both sides of the road going all the way down to at least Newtown. Well, if you looked at this piece of property, and they widened the road, and they put in a five-foot sidewalk, and then, I don't know, if it's two or three feet more for a bicycle lane, the Providence Road's going to be in front door of this house. I mean, it's not that far. So it's almost like, what is, what's the economic purpose of doing this, other than the point you said, sir? That's to possibly give the owner more money when the state has to buy the land from him. The other thing that concerns us as a neighborhood is that this lady actually said publicly that she liked to get the rezoning, and then in the next breath, that she was talking to this Hayman company, the realty company, which was the same company that's involved in, or was involved in Truffle Plaza, and since then, has signs on the corner of Newtown Road and Providence Road. So it's, I don't believe in coincidence. It's more than coincidence that they want to try to get all this to be commercial, which is all zoned residential. So we're against it. That's why we're against this, that it's really not even of any value. It doesn't do anything for the neighborhood. It doesn't benefit the neighborhood of Chatsworth at all. And it's really not in, have all the attributes of the community center where you're supposed to have bicycle lanes, and sidewalks, and access, and other things. So it's, I don't think it's a good use of your time or your vote to move this thing as commercial property. It should stay as it is, and if the road gets wide enough and takes over, so be it. Thank you very much.
Yogesh, is that right?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Yogesh Aari, and my wife and I just bought our house in Chatsworth neighborhood about six months ago. And we pretty much invested all of our life savings into this house, and then now we found out that there's a lot of commercial rezoning going on around the neighborhood, and we are very concerned that the value of our house is going to go down. And all the residents of Chatsworth neighborhood feel that way, that a lot of commercial rezoning activity that's going on along with this piece of land and the other properties, it's going to decrease the value of our homes. And not only that, it's going to increase traffic, and perhaps crime also, because anytime there's a commercial parking lot right next to your house, anything can be going on there at night or at different times, since it's a public access. So we are very much against the zoning, so we hope you disapprove. Thank you.
Thing further from the board, questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Next item is conditional rezoning CZ 2017-010, Poplin Road Town Homes.
Looks like we still don't have anything up. All right. Again, as the chairman indicated, this is a conditional rezoning request, number 2017-010. This is a request to rezone 11.5 acres of property, zone RA-40, that's residential agricultural, 40,000 square foot lots, to R-4 conditional zoning. The reason for the request for R-4 is they're actually asking to put townhomes on there, and the 99 townhomes is what they're actually requesting for the property. That has density of just below 10 units per acre. You've got exact density, how that unit is about eight and a half. Eight and a half, it's about eight and a half units per acre. This part, this property actually is within our area that we've defined for mixed residential. It is very close to one of the interchanges for the bypass, and in that area, in that vicinity, there are a number of higher density residential products that are in there. There's the Bonterra subdivision, which has a mix of densities within there. They've got some townhome developments that range from eight to nine units per acre. They have single family that ranges between three and five units per acre. There's a parcel of property which is not too far from here, again, I don't have a map to show you, which Indian Trail has recently rezoned with apartments, and that's over 12 units per acre. As the area in our plan does call for some higher density residential. Our plan does not define what higher density residential is. It doesn't say it's three units, it doesn't say it's 12 units. It just talks about higher density residential in this area. So the request by the applicant is to put townhomes, which are an attached single-family structure, not an apartment, but an attached single-family structure, what we call townhomes. Again, the request is consistent with our land use plan as far as the request goes. There are, the bypass is scheduled to be opened, sorry, the expressway is scheduled to be opened in 2018, so there are some road improvements that are happening in the area. I don't believe the Poplin Road, which is the road this actually is attached to, is being widened at this point in time. However, there, again, this is still within our area that we've defined as mixed residential. The applicant is here, I think they do have a presentation, so I will turn it over to them unless you have some questions for me right now. I can come back up and afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian right now? This time, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. And the mouse is on the other screen, so that's, here we go. One, thank you again for hearing our project tonight, Chairman, Commissioners, and just publicly. Happy to present this to you. The site, as was noted, is just a little bit north of the bypass. You can see that a little bit through here on the site, on this image. I'm not sure why that didn't change over to the presentation. This one has. So just some aerial imagery of the area, and it kind of just gives the context to what Brian was speaking to, where this is Bonterra Village, and you know, there's townhome sections of Bonterra Village, and I can get into some more in slides that are the same or higher density as what we're proposing in this area. As mentioned, there's some apartments going into the area, so there's a general mix of uses in the area that this is compatible with, from our opinion, based on what's there and being planned for the area, the redevelopment with bypass going in. This is just a graphical render of the site. I'll go into some more details later in terms of berms, buffers, and other planting measures that have been, you know, discussed, some of which the planning board in fairly good length, and with some of the adjacent neighbors, and what we're committing to in order to make this project be very compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Just a quick summary, which was going over with the zoning request, is to go from R-40 to R-4. We're running on the Poplin Road, which is being renamed, or has already been renamed, Bonterra Village Way. Currently, that's a two-lane road. NCDOP and Bowler have worked together to, while a full traffic study was not required by code, by their code of the county's code, it was agreed that a left-turn lane with 100-foot storage would be appropriate and necessary for this development, which the developer is committed to constructing as part of this zoning if it is to go forward. And that was the only improvement that NCDOP recommended based on their extensive studies of the area, obviously the bypass and things of that nature related improvements. I'll go into these on all the following slides, but there have been numerous efforts to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area through conversations, both the county staff, rocks with the town of Indian Trail, and just a general view of both the comprehensive plans from both county and the town, since this is in an area that could go in either jurisdiction, based on the way the various codes are set up. These are some of the buffer and berm enhancements that we've committed to, and through discussions at the community meetings, some conversations with neighbors. The green on there is a buffer, I believe it was eight-foot-high berm, I recall, about 30 feet wide, which was going to have some type of evergreen planting on top to, you know, help screen this from the adjacent single-family on, in Bonterra Village. The bottom-left part of this green there is a yellow color, and that's up against where one of our stormwater ponds would be proposed for county code requirements. And there, we would have plantings along the property line as well for some of that screening. And then something very similar is on the bottom-right, where it's in red, to one of the, there's an area, if you go back to the aerial, a few slides back, get to, you know, something to apologize, but in the area in red, there is a gap in existing vegetation, so we're again planting on putting in a berm and evergreens on top of that berm for visual separation. And then where the yellow is here, we're against the pond, and again, there's existing vegetation from here this way, where there's not really a need for new vegetation, this is already a pretty good buffer there. But in this area, it's all been cleared at some point in the past, and we'll be replanting and putting berm, and additionally, we'll be putting a fence, which I'll show on the next slide. This is just some examples, it's four- to six-foot tall opaque fence of similar, you know, materials to what's shown here, something that'll look good, it'll look maintenance, and will look well over time. So that will go around the entire part of her. There was a lot of community outreach, there was a community meeting, there were also numerous efforts to speak with all of the adjacent property owners where possible, try to, you know, understand their concerns and get feedback from them. Just a letter that the following owners signed as part of the discussion process with the neighborhood. I will note that this owner and this owner here are various members of the same family, and they were at the last meetings, they're who we have been providing some of those additional buffers from as part of their feedback, what they'd like to see as part of the project if it were removed, or to satisfy some of their concerns. So while they did not sign the letter, they have been in, you know, contact with and been trying to work through their concerns with it. This is the Bonterra Village overall plan. We're somewhere roughly here, and the townhomes are in this area, largely, there's a few other small pockets. But some of the facts there, just for a comparison of how this, obviously the projects are considerably different size, 450 acres versus, you know, roughly 11 and a half acres. But by density, if you look at the areas that are townhome-related, we're again proposing around eight and a half units per acre, and there are townhome sections around nine and a half units per acre. And then if you, if you look at their open, their usable common open space, again, areas outside of the floodplain, there are around 15% of their area is usable common open space outside of the floodplain, where our property actually proposes about 17% of its 11 and a half acres as common open space outside of the floodplain. There's no floodplain on this property. So just as a point of comparison, there's a lot, there's a lot of similarities there in March, they're providing a lot of more space for residents to use. This slide, we just had an update today, actually, from Melissa, that this, the redistricting was approved, I believe, at the last meeting in mid-March, March 18th, I think. And so these realignment figures here are what is expected, or plus or minus a few percentage points with that redistricting. So even, you know, with this development, there is sufficient capacity in all the local schools do the redistricting to support this development. And that's, those incentives are expected to project out for quite some time, and even get a little bit better once some of the grandfather provisions of that redistricting laps out over the next four to five-year period. This is again a point of context where our star here is roughly where we're located on the comprehensive plan, and some of these two right circles, which are near the interchanges, are going to be future community centers, neighborhood activity centers, where there's, to the point Brian made, support for that type of denser residential development, similar densities to this development, or even apartments, based on that proximity to the larger commercials sections of development around the podcast. Just as a point, we've been working closely with UCPW and submitted a sketch plan also to the county. That sketch plan has been approved, there's some staff comments and the rest of the sketch plan that we need to resolve should the zoning approval go forward, but just to give you guys an update, we have been working closely with the staff to ensure there's capacity for the project. Getting to some of the actual homes that will be constructed, these are representative elements. elevations. This is a, a render of what the home elevations would look like, see there's some mixed materials and, you know, other architectural elements. And then the next slide is actually basically the finished product in another neighborhood nearby that, that is what the end product would end up looking like, and it's a very high-quality product. That would be good for land values and the surrounding properties, making sure their land values continue to grow. And with that, we would, we would request that if there were no outstanding items that the commissioners would like further information on, or if there was no further public concern or opposition, that we would request a vote tonight on this if, if possible, and we, again, appreciate your time and opportunity to present to you tonight. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Rush?
Hi, Commissioner Chairman. Do have one question. Your, your information on the schools on the possible realignment was dated of January this year, and they've done the realignment since then. Did you, did it come back in the same information?
Yes, yes, and we just spoke to Melissa today, Cody, Cody with the developer, Moser Group today. Poplin Elementary is supposed to be ninety percent capacity over about a ten-year period. The middle school, Poplin Ridge, is around ninety-three percent, and the high schools are around ninety-four percent. I think those, plus or minus a few percentage points.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Helms?
You referenced a light property nearby, is that the one on Monroe Road between Stallings and Indian Trail?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I've been in, I've been in those there. They're nice units.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Yeah. Just wanted to talk about the planning board's recommendation, and so you had that information for you.
Okay, could I mention, Brian, before, we had no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that missed getting signed up that wanted to speak on this project? Okay, ha- having none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Brian.
So the planning board did meet on this item, they, they voted four to one in favor of recommending the request. They did have some conditions that they would suggest the board consider, adding playground equipment in the common area of the development, installing berms and screens indicated on the plans, of course, the applicant was here and they, they kind of went through that with you. Also, installing stormwater measures that are consistent with our cluster development stormwater regulations. The county does not have stormwater regulations applied to all development, but we do have standards for that. They agreed that they would meet those stormwater standards. And then anything else that would apply would be anything that they have referenced on their conceptual plan becomes a condition that they must meet, meet their building materials, those, those items would be part of the conditions that they would also have to meet. Staff has reviewed this as well. We do believe that it is consistent with our land use plan, and we would also recommend it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you want.
Other questions? Thank you, Brian. See, we have Mr. Don Fisher with the planning board with us this evening, so anyone, Don, appreciate you being here. Any questions for Don?
Yeah.
The one individual that voted against thi- against this, what was their objections?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Commissioners. I gotta be upfront with you, I do not remember what the reasoning was. I do know, do you remember, Brian?
It was traffic.
Pardon?
It was traffic.
Okay, it was traffic. The, we did not have opposition, in my opinion, even the owners that were adjacent that they referred to, they worked cordially, et cetera. It was a very good meeting, and we felt that everything that they had done, from the elevations, the schematics, whatever we asked, they answered, and they were agreed, agreed upon to present this to you guys tonight as conditions. So we felt very, very comfortable, even though it was a four to one vote.
Thank you for taking your time, Sherwood.
Okay, is there anything else?
No others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don. Okay, it takes us to item six, and that is a public hearing concerning consideration of fund allocation for our industrial park, and I'll let the manager comment.
Thank you. This was actually on your March nineteenth agenda, and the board approved this item. After that approval, the legal department came back and said, based upon a change in law in 2015, that since it was an appropriation of funds associated with economic development, it did require a public hearing. So we are bringing it back to you this evening in order for that public hearing to be conducted, and it has been appropriately advertised.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on, on this issue? Seeing a hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. That will take us to our informal comments. We have no informal comments, so that will take us to the addition, deletion, and adoption of our agenda. Commissioner Hagmans?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we add the CZ twenty seventeen zero ten to the agenda tonight to be voted on by the board.
Make that twenty-two A.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes to old business. Fruffle Plaza rezoning.
This item has been before you, before a public hearing was conducted. I don't know, Brian, if you had any additional information that you wanted to present to the board, or?
I talked to Ben, our legal department, and we both thought that it's important that we articulate what the conditions are. This is, again, not a public hearing, because the board's already held a public hearing. We probably want to make it clear what the conditions are, and then the board can go from there.
So again, Fruffle Plaza was a rezoning request, came to the board, request to rezone the parcel of property there on Highway sixteen. On Highway sixteen, from R forty to office conditional zoning. This was sent back to the planning board with some suggestions for them to work with the planning board on providing some more detail about the project, maybe limiting some uses. I will tell you that the planning board did recommend denial of this request. They felt like there was not enough detail provided for the request, but I will go over what the conditions are and what the applicant has currently submitted to us. The applicant has limited the uses to the following: office in general, meaning office uses; animal services limited to the following; grooming or training; supplies and veterinarian provided; no overnight boarding of animals shall be permitted other than as an accessory use to at a veterinary hospital or clinic, subject to the following additional conditions: one, overnight boarding must be located entirely indoors; and two, animals and outdoor runs for exercise or bathroom breaks must be attended at all times, so limited to commercial services uses, and those are business support service, communication service, re- research service, studio, instructional or service, personal improvement service with the need to, without the need to apply for a special use permit, a daycare center without the need to apply for a special use permit, and self-service storage facility limited to type one. Type one is an interior building, there are no exterior doors, it's all inside, that's what type one means. Now, when they talk about the no need to apply for a special use permit within our UDO, at the time you apply for rezoning, you can also request that uses that would normally require a special use permit, that those be included, and therefore, they don't have to go back through a special use permit process. That's what the applicant is requesting on those. Some additional conditions that the applicant has put forth: no more than forty feet in height, which is two stories; they will provide a photometric light plan to meet the county's ordinance; they actually have a provision where they didn't have to submit a plan, they could just do a certain type of light, but they've agreed to actually do a photometric light plan; they will meet the county's stormwater regulations, as indicated in our cluster development standards; they will retain some existing tree cover within the buffer area and add additional plantings as necessary to meet an S-two level screen; and then the design guidelines, as far as materials, are all outlined on their conceptual plan, they'll have to meet those as well. Those are the conditions that the applicant has put forth at this point in time. I believe I indicated in the past that this project does fall within the area that we would say is consistent with our comprehensive plan, it does fall within that area identified as a neighborhood center. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
This is one point two acres, is that correct?
It's about one point five acres. Once they take some of the right-of-way, it may be less, but it's about one point five acres.
Commissioner, you, do you have a question? Commissioner Rush?
Go ahead.
And that, and that's the concern, is still the, how, how much, if they take, will that affect any of the conditional uses?
As far as the takings for the roadway. So this property is large enough that it actually could accommodate a widening. In fact, they've actually agreed to provide some of the right-of-way necessary for it, if possible. So because of the size of the property, it could actually accommodate the widening and still be developable. That would not necessarily be a taking on that.
And that, and that's gonna provide the bicy- you know, we heard some of the citizens from the neighborhood about the bicycle lanes and the trails, that would address some of those.
It would depend on what the actual, there's enough right-of-way that they can accommodate it, whether or not it's bicycles, or whether or not it's, that hasn't been determined at this point in time, but it can accommodate it. It can, the right-of-way is, is there that they can accommodate that.
And I believe that's what we heard, one of the original public hearings was connectivity.
That is correct.
Commissioner Helms?
Yeah, I, you say the planning board voted to deny this?
That is correct, yes.
Can we hear why?
Thank you again for the opportunity to be before you, Commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Helms, we voted four to one against it. Is that right, four to one?
It was actually unanimous.
Unanimous, excuse me. The main reason was, we were challenged by the board to make recommendations as to what should or should not be put in that particular structure. We talked at length on this, came up with ideas, et cetera, and we did not get a buy-in on anything. In words, we could not do what y'all asked us to do. And that's the reason we voted no.
Is that, is that to say the?
If I can expand on that just a little bit, the, the past applications that the board, the planning board has received have been more site-specific. There's, you know, the building, the, the design that they show, and the building location, and the size of the building. This one did not have that. It did not have the building location laid out, it did not have a design for the building. And while the applicant did agree to limit some uses, it's my understanding the planning board felt like maybe they didn't go far enough in limiting the uses. So their issue was, they felt that this was more speculative in nature and not site-specific, and they felt like because of that, they could not vote in favor of it. And I say, do you think that, I want to make sure that the chairman felt that I was hitting all the points on there, but that there are other types of applications they've seen have been more site-specific, and they were uncomfortable with that.
Commissioner Hagmans?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve conditional rezoning petition CZ twenty seventeen dash zero zero seven to rezone property appearing on tax map as parcel zero six one five six zero zero three in Sandy Ridge Township from R forty to zero to O CZ, subject to stated conditions agreed to by the district, and adopt the applicable consistency statement.
Here we have a motion discussion. Commissioner Rush?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at this, you know, I have concerns with the, the road coming through. I really haven't nailed that down, but the, the petitioner has definitely been very patient with this as going on. That is in the neighborhood center, and to be true to what we've done in other areas, I, I support the motion. But it is gonna be, you know, it would be nice for the, is there any other conditions that can, I don't know if the petitioner can answer any questions on the conditions of why they didn't meet what the planning board was looking for?
Ben? Can we at this point entertain that information?
Well, I think if the conditions are such that they become further restrictive, for example, you know, part of the conditional use process, conditional zoning process is, can be a potential nego- negotiation, as long as it doesn't substantially change the, the use or anything like that. So I, I think at this point, you, you could, you could hear from the petitioner.
Would you like to do that, Commissioner Rush?
Yes, please.
Mr. Allen? Lee?
James Allen.
James Allen, sorry.
Here on behalf of Charlene Carter, the owner of the property. And I, I guess to answer your question, most of the, my impression was it was going for uses, and we did not come down to uses at the planning board. My recollection's a little, a little bit different than, than what you have heard. There were a lot of size restrictions, they wanted to limit to one story, and we were unwilling to do that. There are some uses on here that we, quite frankly, I don't think would, would work on this site, that we would be willing to. No one ever approached us or asked us to limit them further than what's on here. We would certainly be willing to, to address those. I would point out that on the site plan that you have there, there is an additional twenty-foot dedication of right-of-way already included in the plan, so it goes from one point five to one point oh-nine acres of usable space.
So you've, you've already taken?
DOT told us that, it was on the initial submission, and it's, it's on the site plan that is part of the conditions for this, for this. So if, if you wish to further restrict, or if there are any of those uses that give you any positive, I'd certainly be happy to address those. Otherwise, I don't really know how to answer your question.
Was there any that, so there was nothing that the planning board said, you know, a daycare would not be a good use there, or anything like that?
I, I don't recall specifically, it was, it was, it was a while back. I will tell you that, that my client thinks that that's a use that could possibly be there, and we, we would like to keep a, a daycare as one of the possible uses.
But the right-of-way's taken care of.
Twenty feet, which is what DOT told, additional twenty feet from, from that, so essentially another half acre of the property, all on sixteen is taken, and that's twenty feet. My understanding was, when they were looking at the bike lanes and something that was less than twenty feet, I believe, that, that comes on there. But we don't have the design of the roads, we don't know where it's going. But again, twenty feet of this property, an additional twenty feet from the existing right-of-way is dedicated.
Commissioner Helms?
I, James, we've talked, we've talked about this a number of times. I do have some concern with the veterinary surfaces and, and the ability to have animals outside and creating a disruption for the neighborhood. Also, I do have a concern with daycare on an acre a lot beside that roadway, you know, without exposure for the children. I mean, I've, I've never seen anything I could keep my kids when they were small pinned in, you know? So I have some concerns from that. I don't remember property of this type being asked to rezon without a description of what's gonna be built, and that's, that's what I see as lacking, and that, that is a concern for me.
Again, and I don't want to get into where we were back in, you know, in, in the, in the public hearing, to, to go in- to, to go into any of those type things. But again, the zoning ordinance allows for us to, to ask for a conditional rezoning to come in and limit these spaces. And, and the motivation was to go in. And so this is, highest and best uses property is commercial. And these are the only site, these are the only things we want to potentially put on the property and limit it to these uses because there is a neighborhood there. This is in a highly residential area. But it's also along Highway sixteen, which is getting ready to be a four lane road. I mean, it, it is not viable to have this as, as residential property. You know, daycare centers all have their own requirements. They come in, they're mostly franchised. And, and, and they may not be able to go there. If you, if, you know, if you're asking that we remove that as one of the potential uses, I think we put the veterinary clinic. I, I know there has been some interest in that use. And I think that we have eliminated most of that, or essentially all of, of that risk by having only indoor boarding. And dogs have to be supervised if they're outside. I mean, you have to let them out to go to the bathroom. They would have to be supervised. They would have to have someone there with them all the time to stop the dogs barking. Neighborhood has dogs in the backyard. So we would certainly be willing to consider removing the daycare center if that's what you're asking us to, to do.
I agree that this piece of property ultimately has to be commercial. Because, you know, I'm looking for a piece of land to build a house. In no way I'd consider it, you know, where, where it is right now. So I just want to find the right that mixes with the neighborhood. That's not a, a negative to them.
Anything else for Mr. Lee? Any further discussion? Based on the conversation we just had, I assume that we're voting on the motion as is and no request for any changes. I would just say that, as you know from the beginning, this, I think this has been on the agenda about four times. It's been a, a quite a contentious issue. We heard from a lot of the neighboring landowners. And it, it is an area, Western Union County continues to be an area of transition where we have a little bit of the old and a little bit of the new. I, I get concerned sometimes when, and, and I understand it's, it's a, you know, self-interest and personal desire to... We talk about who owns the property and what they have and don't have, and those kind of things. And that's all well and good. But as far as I'm concerned, I have to look at the property in its highest and best use and what, as, as far as future use. And in concert with what Commissioner Helm said, I believe at some point in time that this parcel's never going to have a house on it. And it's going to be used for commercial use. So to sit it, let it sit there and languishes R forty, to me is, is not the logical decision. And so I, I will support the motion. So we have a motion to approve. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Takes us to item twenty-two, new business, Hemby Bridge Small Area Plan.
Yes, Commissioner. Ben, do they need to address the consistency statement?
Believe that was part of the, the mo- the motion.
Okay, okay, thank you. The Hemby Bridge Small Area Plan, as the board will recall, is part of your comprehensive plan. The planning department does conduct small area studies as it relates to implementation of our comprehensive plan. They have recently completed the Hemby Bridge Small Area Plan. Have presented it to Hemby Bridge and received approval and are asking for approval of the plan. Brian, do you have any, I'm sorry. Lee, Lee, do you have any presentation for the board?
I'll do a short presentation. Part of our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2014 was to conduct small area studies as an implementation tool for, for the comprehensive plan. Another one of the strategies that was in the comp plan was to work with municipalities that are in, that are in Indian County. So when the plan was adopted, we decided as, as staff that the, the small area planning process was, was one of the first things we wanted to do as, as part of our implementation strategy. And we sat down and talked about where some of these small area plans should be. And bypass area kind of made the most sense because it was an area that there's going to be a lot of change in over the future. And we wanted to really get out in front of, in front of that change. We wanted to go ahead and get the plan, get some small area plans in place that could really define what that area should be. This area kind of came about because it's the first change coming out of Mecklenburg County as you, as you come into here. So this is kind of where it started. It started at the, the interchanges at the bypass and Indian Trail Fairview Road. So we agreed as staff, that's what we, we wanted to do. And we approached Hemby Bridge about working together on this small area plan. And we got positive feedback from, from the Hemby Bridge Town Council. We conducted three community meetings, all of which were very well attended. It's not a, it's a fairly large area geographically, but population wise, I think it's got about eleven hundred residents, eleven hundred parcels. So it's not very big as far as...